Ms. Alexander, is this your question?
No, one more.
All right, it's approximately seven minutes past seven. I'll call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beloit City Council to order. The first item is roll call.
Roll call shows six city councilors are present. Counselor Levy is absent.
And I would note that the inclement weather isn't probably responsible. I hope that he will arrive sometime during our session. We understood he was running a little bit late, but I wanted to get started here this evening. The next item is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance, verifiying of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is Special Orders of the Day and Announcements. This evening we have none. Item number four is Public Hearings. Four A is a resolution approving a change in the use of the city's home program income and 2008, '09, and '10 home dollars. This is before the council for a public hearing. It has been looked at and reviewed by the Community Development Authority with the recommendation for approval. Ms. Christensen, can you give us the staff report, please?
The city has approximately $230,000 in home program income, $50,459 in 2008 home dollars, $95,573 in 2009 home dollars, and $108,172 and $2010 home dollars. Historically, the city has received home dollars and just allocated it to owner-occupied rehab projects only. It goes back to the days when we actually applied from the state, and there were separate programs for owner-occupied rehab and rental rehab, and we only applied for owner-occupied rehab. And we continued that tradition when we started getting it on an annual basis through the consortium. But what we're finding now is that there is a greater demand for the rental rehab loans than the homeowner loans. I think just given the economy, it's much more difficult for the homeowners to take that on right now. And so to allow us to get the dollars spent, to get our, you know, houses in our neighborhoods improved, we are asking that you authorize the use of home dollars for rental loans. The current housing program manual that we operate under indicates that 75% of the dollars have to be used for homeowner loans and 25% for rental. So that would not change that percentage. And the standard is one loan per rental property owner per year, and that would stay in place unless a change was made. So what is on your agenda for approval as a resolution which would just allow those home dollars to be used for rental loans in the percentage allocated in the home, in the Housing Rehab Program Manual? And CDA did review this and recommend approval.
All right, thank you, Ms. Christensen. Does anyone wish to appear and speak on a resolution approving a change in use of the city's home program income and 2008, '09, and '10 home dollars? If so, please step forward and take the podium. Again, anyone wish to speak on a public hearing or at a public hearing on a resolution approving a change in use of the city's home program income and 2008, '09, and '10 home dollars? And the third call, does anyone wish to appear and speak on a public hearing, at a public hearing, looking at a resolution approving a change in use of the city's home program income and 2008, '09, and '10 home dollars? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve four A. Is there such a motion? Mr. DeForest, Ms. Johns, counselor discussion. Mr. Noonam?
Wait a second, I got, my computer's blocking the screen here, so. All right, Mr. Noonam.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. A question for Ms. Christensen. So my understanding then is that for the rental units, there's no limit for how many units could be in that particular parcel, right? So if they had four, six, eight, they still be able to apply for it?
Yeah, and I don't know if there's a max. I don't know all the loan guidelines, so I don't know if there's a maximum amount they can apply for. I know the size of the complex doesn't matter, but there may be a limit on the amount to be spent on each unit. I'm not completely fluent in those regs, so.
And then for the home program, is it for the interior and exterior, or is it?
Yes, say it's interior or exterior is eligible. But our Housing Rehab Program Manual guidelines say that you have to deal with all code compliant issues first. So if they can't just come in and do siding only, they end up having to deal with lead issues and any other, like, electrical upgrading and stuff like that issues. That's part of our program manual.
Great. And so right now, the way that this is worded, one person could come and apply for the full $230,000, is that what we have, right?
We have 200, well, we have a number, 230 plus 50 plus 95 plus 108, so it's not just 230.
Okay. Right now, the way that it's written, they would be able to come and apply if they wanted to, if they were able to apply for that full amount.
I don't think one person can apply for 230. I honestly don't know one way or another. I mean, I'm not the person who administers the program, so I don't know what the cap is for rental loans in terms of the amount.
Hopefully, there is one. I'm not seeing one right now, so, but the reason I'm asking is...
Well, the manual is about this thick, so there's stuff in there that's not covered in this resolution.
The reason I'm asking is, is I was thinking about making an amendment to a maximum of possibly four units or something along those lines, also with the maximum, because it's 25% of the total cost of the project, is that right?
No. I mean, I don't know what the standards are in the manual. I don't have the home program manual in front of me. So all the 25% is, is out of, like, the $230,000, 25% of those funds could be used for a rental loan. 25% of the $51,459, 25% of the $95,573. So 25% of the total funds could be used for rental loans. For as, how the loan is structured, I'm not the loan specialist, so I don't know those. I mean, if I would've known ahead of time, I could've asked Kristy Harrison, and she would've filled me in on that, but we weren't, I wasn't, I don't know what the loan maximums are.
Thank you.
I mean, if you want that information, I can provide that to you. I can get it from Kristy and get that to you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Sure.
If their data we passed, this as it is right now, we wouldn't be able to amend it if we thought that those numbers were too...
No. If you approve this, if you're not comfortable approving this, you should lay it over, not approve it and expect to come back to it, because this is, it's essentially a budget allocation. So if you're not comfortable with it, you should just lay it over to the next meeting.
I mean, I like it. I think it's definitely the right thing to do in this current environment. I just want to make sure that we aren't, you know, subsidizing some of these very large complexes and eviscerating the entire budget.
Well, and there is a low-income requirement, so they do have to rent to low and moderate income people. So, I mean, there are some strings that go with the dollars. It's not like we're just giving people money and, we're not a bank. So there are still community development block rent and home strings with all our rehab dollars and, and, you know, we don't just give them money and give them a check for the whole loan and walk away. They get it in increments as they complete work, and Bob does the bids, and Bob releases the money as work is completed, and they have an inspection before any dollars are released. So there is actually a very formal process. We're not just giving somebody a check and saying, "Here, go crazy."
Wonderful, good, very thorough. I was about to die all the eyes.
But if you need more information and want to wait two weeks, I'm guessing two weeks over the holidays isn't going to be that big of a deal.
So not time-sensitive, if the other counselors were open to that, I'd like to make a motion that we lay it over till the first meeting in January.
All right, thank you, Ms. DeForest.
I will second that motion, and I was going to point out that there's that low to moderate income requirement which Ms. Christensen brought up, and I was also wondering, from what I understand about this, some of the formal connection referral happens because there is a code violation. Is that correct, still, that that's what we're trying to do, is when someone has a code violation, we're connecting them to these dollars when possible?
Yeah, we do for homeowners. I don't know how much that happens with the rental inspections. I'm just not sure.
Would we create more of a mechanism for that to happen in the future?
Yeah, I'll just ask Tom if we're doing that.
Okay.
I mean, if you're going to lay it over anyway, we can provide more information before the next meeting.
Great. So this is an attempt for us to try to help support a property owner who has a violation as a way to address it, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Johns?
I'm sorry, I thought I was paying attention very well. Why, why are we laying this over? And why is it on the table to lay over?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Noonam, Ms. DeForest, I think you're interested in what, whether there's an income or whether a maximum limit on the loan amount for the rental?
Right. Two questions that I'm curious about is, is there a maximum amount that one person would be able to apply for? One, and, and two, I'm curious if there's a limit in this huge manual of how many units can be in one particular parcel. We have several very large complexes, and so, not going against them, but I just want to, I want to find out if one is going to be able to take, you know, the lion's share, or we're going to be able to get more maximum, we're going to be able to maximize these dollars and get into many of our challenged neighborhoods and really get some serious impact, is what I'm curious to see.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. DeForest?
All right, so part of the question is to see what the regs, if they already have stipulations, and then if we're comfortable with their stipulations, if we want to add to those.
Yeah, and they're not actually regs. There's our, the city program manual for housing rehab, so it's not HUD determined. It's something we have locally.
We submitted to HUD, HUD, is that correct?
No.
No, we didn't.
I mean, we don't have to, as long as, I mean, they came in and looked at our program manual when they monitored us, and we had to make some modifications that will be coming forward in the near future about how we're handling lead. They make us show the sections that relate to regs when they come and monitor us, but the city council approves that manual. And they just, you just, it predates you guys. But anytime we make a change in the manual, it comes to you. We can't just administratively change the manual.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Johns, you have another?
I'm good.
All right, there is a motion and a second to, I understand, lay the matter over to the first meeting in January. And Ms. Alexander, correct me if I'm wrong, that would take precedent over the motion to approve, is that right?
Correct. If you're going to lay it over, the motion to approve is not discussed.
All right. Any other further questions or comments by counselors? And I'll go ahead and call a vote, all in favor of laying the matter over for a two-week period, or till the first meeting in January, I guess that's about two weeks. Indicate by aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, motion carries five to one. The next item is item number five. Item number five is citizens' participation. It's an opportunity for individuals to address the council on items that either will come before us, or tonight, or may in the future come before us. In a moment, I'll ask that if you wish to participate, step forward, indicate your name and address. I would ask that you limit your comments to approximately three minutes, and while I won't cut you off in mid-sentence, I do remain, rather retain the prerogative of the chair to interrupt you politely if there are a number of people who wish to talk. Please, this is citizens' participation. Anyone wishing to address the council, please step forward. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Richard McKellen. I reside at 2536 Hawthorne Drive in Beloit. This is my fiancee.
My residence, Kim Sando.
Kim Sando. We are here discussing resolution, excuse my vision, six D as in David. I'm not sure if you have the history of this resolution that you're going to be consenting on, is that we are living in a cul-de-sac that has approximately 11 residential units. These are single-family homes that have their own septic and water, well-water systems. We have, unfortunately, one person in our development that has a failing or failed septic system. He has applied for a permit from the health department for them to go ahead and reinstall, but it was stopped by the city permit in regards to the fact that there is a discussion about putting in city water and sewer into a development that is already functioning quite well, and that all of us here that have attended have been maintaining our septic and water systems for a number of years. We've looked through most of our property holdings at 2536 and find that there is no easements and/or by the title search that allows anything to be done on the property except for Wisconsin Power and Light. My other, our other concern and concerns within our own residential community is that you're looking at putting a fee structure or a burden assessment against each one of the residences that could be in excess of $18,000 just to pay for that system to be installed, where right now, there's 10 out of 11 homes that don't want it or require it. And you're forcing a lot of us that are already forced, facing some pretty hard economic times, looking at just our own real estate value. We've decreased in our value of our home over 9%. We've checked with our real estate folks to see what kind of value we would be receiving for this type of benefit, and there's nothing there. You're putting at least three or four of the residences into a situation where we may have to go ahead and either re-mortgage our home, sell our home at a loss, which we can't do until, if you make forceless order through, we can't do that unless we accept the fact of being hooked up. Now, that $18,000 doesn't include the approximate $7,000 of other costs for the lift stations and connecting to the outside system. And on top of that, you want to put a 40-foot-wide drive easement between two properties right on the property line and puts you within 16 feet of our wellhead. So we're at a loss here, and we're looking for you to consider granting the health department the capability of filing, allowing the permit for that party to go ahead and get a new septic system.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McKellen. I'm not certain if you're aware of the procedures, but we certainly, this evening, would not be voting on the final application or final process. If, if four D goes forward, it simply is the start of the process. It's not the end of the process.
But we were told that we would be having a meeting within the first two weeks of December, which we were never informed of, we were never informed of this meeting. We only heard about this today.
I understand. There's some controversy about the issue at this point. Is there anything else you'd like to add, sir?
Not myself, unless we have other parties from the...
Anyone else wish to participate in citizens' participation? Thank you, Mr. McKellen.
Thank you very much, Senator.
All right, let me, at this, at this point, indicate that Council President Levy has made it through the inclement weather, and he's taken his rightful chair as president at 7:24 in the evening. Just before the second individual, Mr. Dabson speaks.
Thank you. Go right ahead, sir. Glad to see you made it back safely. Thank you. My name is Max Johnson, 2531 Hawthorne Drive. Real simple, I can't say it better than the gentleman prior to me. Eloquent, well-spoken, and to the point, and I happen to agree with him, so.
Thank you. We're on item E.
No, we're still citizens.
Okay. Think anyone else wishing to speak under citizens' participation? Seeing none, we will close citizens' participation at this time. Move on to item six, Consent Agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members or request, in which event the item will be removed from the, from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. So any counselor that would like to have anything removed from the consent agenda? Counselor DeForest?
I'd like to request that item six D be removed from the agenda, please, Mr. President.
Six D?
Yes. D is...
Thank you. Counselor Johns? Okay, none? Okay, anyone else?
Ms. Johns, I think your button seems to be misfired.
Okay, there it goes. There it goes. So the consent agenda will consist of items six A, B, C, E through K. Is there a motion to that effect?
Move through, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Van de Bogart, second by Haynes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Item six D, please. Staff report, uh... Mr. Bott, please.
The resolution before the council is to provide permission to acquire a construction and access easement over portions of properties located at 2555 White Oaks Drive and 2536 and 2542 Hawthorne Drives to allow for the extension of a gravity sanitary sewer and potable water to serve the properties on Hawthorne Drive. The intent of this resolution is to give the engineering division the authority to begin negotiations on this easement. At the time when that's a, an agreement has had between the city and the parties, the engineering department will move forward with processing for a final resolution to levy special assessments. At that time, the property owners will have an opportunity to come and speak before the council to give their concerns over these special assessments, and it'll be levied against for the improvements of the water and sewer. But at this time, we're just asking for the council to authorize this resolution order to begin that, for the relocation order, to begin the process of negotiation for the easement. I understand that there's a number of questions that counselors have concerning this issue, and we're considering offering that this be laid over to some time in the future, and that's certainly an opportunity that counselors have to do. So without answering questions, anybody has?
Any questions?
Could we ask the public works director to please explain to everyone assembled why there's a requirement, I believe, super important, why this whole issue came up? I think that might be very helpful this evening. And then if a counselor would like to lay this over, we'd be happy to have another meeting with residents after the holidays. We're not going to try to squeeze it in between Christmas and New Year. It'll take a little time. We'll sit out in January and explain why this is done, and this is a fairly routine manner, just have to respect the community area. Okay. If you would do that, please, that'd be helpful.
What has happened in this situation, an individual who lives on the, the farthest east end of Hawthorne Drive had a sewer, or septic system fail. Their septic hauler or plumber, whoever inspected their system, reported to the county that the system had failed. And at that time, the county, or they asked for a permit in order to repair it. The county contacts the city of Beloit because this area is in our sewer service area, to whether now we have sewer service available. And with an extension into the neighborhood, we do have sewer service available, so we tell them we have sewer service available. At that time, they make a decision whether or not, typically when we have sewer available, they do not issue a permit for repair of that septic system, because the intent would be for us to extend sanitary sewer to the neighborhood. And that's what the situation is at this point. And then we go through the process of asking the council for a preliminary resolution in order to authorize us to begin the preparation of plans and specifications to install sanitary sewer. We do that, we've done that. The council's authorized a preliminary resolution to proceed with the development of the best way to serve these citizens in this area. And the next step in this case, because we do, we have found that the best way to serve the area is through gravity and to run through, over to, well, it's on White Oaks Drive, yeah, back in that area, that is why we are asking for an easement to get into the neighborhood with the sanitary sewer. It'll serve two purposes. It'll be an easement after it's completed for these utilities to go through, but during construction, there'll be an ingress, ingress easement basically for people who are in the neighborhood to get in out of the neighborhood during times of construction. Because of how narrow that area is, and our effort to try to, you know, disrupt as little property as possible, that there'll be times when during construction activities, people will not have access up and down Hawthorne Drive, and so this easement will provide access into the people who are, so to say, behind the construction activity, because we'll go up the hill. And so this process happens where the council authorizes this resolution, we begin negotiations with the property owners for these easements. Once that negotiation is basically complete, that information is used to develop the final resolution. Once the final resolution is completed, then all the affected properties will be noticed. They have an opportunity to come to city council for a public hearing. The council hears the concerns and makes a decision whether or not to proceed with special assessment on those properties. And I guess there's two options. Either the council approved the installation of sanitary sewer with a special assessment or not. And if they choose not to, then the affected property will have to find some other way to provide sewer to their house. And at this time, and we certainly don't see a necess, you know, a necessity to allow a septic system to be built in an area where we have sanitary sewer available, public sewer available. That's basically a thumbnail view of the process that goes through. I'm certainly answering questions anybody may have through this.
Okay. Counselor DeForest?
Just to clarify about the waiver, so if I remember correctly, what you said was the Rock County Health Department decides whether or not to issue a permit, but they do look to us as the sewer service area to grant a waiver as a possibility if, if we so deem. So I just want to make sure it's clear. I mean, and in our standard practices, not to grant that waiver when they are within our sewer service area and we are able to connect. I just want to make sure that we're not trying to muddle, this is a decision that the city makes in conjunction with the county. Is that correct?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely. If sewer, if it's in, if it's in our sewer service area and we can get sewer service to those properties in a reasonable, you know, way, then we'll tell the county that there's public sewer available. If it would take a large project to extend sanitary sewer to a neighborhood, then we probably would not, we would indicate to the county that there's not public sewer available.
Okay.
And then, they would issue a permit.
Okay. And then, also, I have a comment, not a question. My concern for requesting to have this item laid over is because in speaking with some residents about this issue, they misunderstood and thought that they were to be individually noticed about the easement issue as it appears on our agenda tonight, did not find out about it, according to them, until last night, and wanted more time to ask questions and find out about it and to meet with staff. And so, I would like to ask my colleagues to provide that courtesy to our residents to have their questions answered and addressed before we vote on this relocation order easement. Thank you.
Any other counselor discussion?
I would like to perform a motion that I'd like to lay over until the January eighteenth meeting to give time for residents to meet and staff to have their questions answered.
Okay, before we go there, let's get all the discussion out first, and then, we can definitely entertain that motion at that time, if that's okay with you? Okay. Counselor Johns?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am in agreeance with Counselor DeForest, I would like to see further discussion with the adjacent property owners regarding the order for relocation specifically. And regardless of how that conversation goes, something has to be done. I hope that everyone can come to peaceful terms, but we do have to do something, so... But I would support laying it over until next month to see if something different can be done.
Any other counselor comments or concerns? Mr. Botts, is this a time-sensitive issue by?
No, I don't believe so.
You don't believe so? Okay. Counselor Johns? No comment. Okay. At this time, Counselor DeForest, you're in order to restate your motion, if that's okay?
Make a motion to lay over item six D, please, Mr. President.
Yes.
There's a motion and a second.
January eighteenth.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on the floor to lay this over to the January eighteenth meeting. Before we do that, I want to make sure staff, and I'll defer to the city manager or to Mr. Botts, that we have an understanding of what we, what we're looking for before the eighteenth meeting, because that, I don't want to just lay it over, just to lay it over so you understand where, what we want.
Yes, Mr. President, we did have a brief discussion about this issue during the agenda review session.
Okay.
Mr. Botts will be arranging a meeting with the residents at a convenient time, probably the first week after the, after New Year's. And we'll sit down, we'll go through all of this stuff again, and talk about all the options and alternatives and what the DNR standards are for sewer service in urban areas, and see if we can answer all their questions and back up any need for discussion.
Okay, and also, Mr. Botts or city manager, will we be copied on that, so the meeting date, so we were...
Sure.
Okay, if we could, greatly appreciate that.
...council when we're going to meet.
Okay. Counselor Johns?
Sorry.
It's okay.
And can we just clarify, is this meeting for all of the residents on both those streets or just the adjacent property owners, or just so we know what we're scheduling now so there's no questions later after the fact that someone didn't get an invitation?
Well, it seems like we should invite everyone that's impacted by the project. As Counselor DeForest pointed out earlier, this is the easement component, which is a step toward ultimately getting to the point of deciding whether or not we're going to build this and special assess the residents for it. This is just an intervening step. However, as you heard from the residents, I'm not sure everybody has it all separated, so I think we should invite everybody, we're going to go through the whole process again. Now, I understand that our engineering staff did meet with the residents, when was that, back in November or?
Yeah, I'm not positive on that date, but...
Okay, so that there was one meeting already, we'll have a second meeting, let's have everyone there. If we need to spend extra time with the adjacent property owners, we'll be happy to do that. Let me make one more statement, though, at least people get concerned about the relocation order. In the state of Wisconsin, there's a very specific statutory standard and requirement for how government agencies must proceed with the acquisition of real estate, whether it's a right of way to build a road, or an easement for a utility, or actually buying property to put a facility on it. The state has a very, very well-defined procedure that we have to follow, and every acquisition has to follow that process. We must go through these steps before we can talk to the property owners. We cannot talk to you or negotiate anything related to this until after the relocation order is approved by council. So, this meeting is going to be informational-only, we will not be discussing any potential terms and conditions of an acquisition of the easement. That's all that's being asked here, is an easement. We're not taking any property, it'll be a regular utility easement, part of it is already dedicated for an easement. The utilities will be put in, this whole area will be restored, and it'll be back in yard space just like it is now. So, this is not a taking for title purposes, we're actually going to own the property going forward. But we'll have the information meeting, try to get all these questions answered, and get everybody up to speed on why this is being done.
Thank you. We vote on that?
No.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second, I guess, all those in favor of laying this over? I was getting, I was getting to the point of, we're going to vote on the motion in the second to lay it over to the January eighteenth meeting with the specifics laid out by the city manager. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven zero to lay it over until January eighteenth. Thank you very much. Item seven, ordinances, there are none. Item eight, appointments, there are none. Item nine, council activities and upcoming events, Counselor DeForest, please.
Yes, I would just like to make sure the public knows about Project Hope. It is a wonderful opportunity to help out those in our community who are struggling economically, financially. There's been a huge coat and clothing and personal care items drive, and they're actually having a clothing and coat giveaway, and it is to be Thursday, December twenty-third, from one to three o'clock at the Colak Education Center at sixteen thirty-three Keeler Avenue. And if you need transportation that day, the city of Beloit, thank you to Michelle Gavin and her staff, has decided for this giveaway that people may ride the bus for free to get to this event, they just have to show the flyer. I have flyers with me, and if you see me around town, I will have flyers with me. You can also contact the school district of Beloit for a flyer, and many of our human service agencies have the flyers as well. You just need to show them the flyer, and you can ride the bus for free so that you can get to this event. Also, we're still taking donations. If you have any new or gently-used coats, clothing for all ages and sizes, shoes of all sizes, personal care items like toothpaste, shampoo, et cetera, and toys for children of all ages, we would love to see those donated. To donate those items, you can contact Robin Stutt at Beloit Memorial High School, and her number is three six one three one seven nine. And this event was organized because we've seen so many, particularly children, that do not have adequate winter wear for walking to school and playing outside at recess, so we're really trying to address that need, so appreciate those who helped organize this event. Again, that's December twenty-third from one to three o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dent?
Yes, I'd just like to remind everyone to try to practice fire safety in the home as much as possible. Every now and then, we do have home fires during the holiday season, and it always seems particularly tragic when those occur at this time of year. And as a reminder, the fire department, as always, on fire station number one, has a wreath that is a reminder to try to be as safe and, as far as fire safety in your home as you possibly can be. It is lit with, I believe, its blue bulbs, and as fires occur, they replace those with red ones. So far, I counted this evening, three red bulbs, apparently, there've been three, at least minor fires, that have occurred. Fortunately, no white bulbs, they put a white bulb in the wreath to indicate if there's been a fatality from a fire, and we certainly hope and pray that that does not occur. But in this busy season, please be very, very mindful of fire safety in the home and take whatever steps you can to protect yourself from that.
Thank you. Counselor Vanda Bogart?
Thank you, everyone who participated a couple, about a week ago or so, in Hollidazzle, downtown Beloit, lots of activity and Christmas and holiday cheer. With that, also, a wish for everyone to have a happy holiday season and a Merry Christmas coming up the end of the week, and then, of course, drive carefully. I say it all the time.
Thank you. Counselor Nuno?
Thank you, Mr. President, and may I say, I'm glad that you made it this evening.
Thank you.
I, too, want to say congratulations to everyone that participated in Hollidazzle last week ago, this past Friday. It's a tremendous success, a wonderful turnout, it's so exciting to see so many different people participate in so many different ways, either attending or volunteering. We're very fortunate to have such an active community, and those evenings, whether downtown or in other areas of the city, it's always very exciting and a great sense of pride that we should all feel. I'd like to thank three-term now leaving, Wisconsin Assemblyman Chuck Benedict, finishing three terms in the assembly and finishing up his term now, and we appreciate his service and his efforts to help Beloit continue to move our city forward. And I would like to also wish everyone Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Counselor Johns?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will try not to repeat too much. Hollidazzle was fantastic, I wanted to extend a thank you to the Downtown Beloit Association for coordinating and the fact that I look forward to Art Walk in the spring, primarily because I get to go downtown and socialize and look at all the arts and crafts, but it'll be warm. So, and also, we wanted to make sure I wished everyone a warm and safe and joyous holiday season, so, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Counselor Haynes?
I should have something today. I'd like to, yes, exactly. I'd like to remind everyone that, you know, in this holiday season, that while technically tomorrow's the first day of winter, functionally for us, we've already had a month of it, and that in, over the next days between now and Christmas, we're scheduled, or they're forecasting four of those days to have snow. I'd like to remind everyone to be safe and so that you can get safely to your loved ones, and to make sure you clear your sidewalks within forty-eight hours of the end of the snowfall. Thank you.
And so, how do you follow that? Yeah. I would, first of all, like to thank Vice President Vanda Bogart for filling in for me. The roads are kind of slippery out there, so we need to make sure that we're careful when we go home. I usually have a forty-five-minute drive to work, it took me about an hour and a half to get here tonight, and my car does go twenty-five miles per hour, I thought it'd go faster than that all the time, but, but I want to thank everyone for filling in, and also, Dave, I think the last time you did your presentation, that you said it was not going to snow, that we're going to have sunny weather for the rest of the year, so, okay. But I would encourage everyone to, please be careful out there as we go around the shop, your last-minute shopping, please be careful out there on the roads. As Counselor Haynes said, make sure we get the walks cleared, and also, encourage everyone when there is a snow emergency and they're asking for you to have your vehicles off the street, please do so. It makes it a lot easier for the Department of Public Works to get the streets cleared. We get a lot of phone calls about their street not being plowed. We understand that, we have the same concerns, that contrary to popular belief, our street does not get plowed first. So, we want to make sure that when there is a snow emergency, that everyone, please follow what we're asking you to do and remove all vehicles from the road so we can make sure our streets are safe as we move forward from there. And also, to wish everyone a happy holiday as well. That concludes council activities and upcoming events. Item ten, city manager's presentation. And we have an update on Christmas decoration disposal. Mr. Botts?
In one of our flyers, that was, this one happened to be in the Beloit Daily News, same information that was passed out in the shopper and on the website and everywhere else, that describes about our disposal of Christmas trees after the holidays. Beginning Monday, January third, you can place your Christmas tree curbside, that will be offered for two weeks, and the tree must be free of stands, that's wooden stands, any type of stands, et cetera, bags, lights, garland, or ornaments, anything in there that can't go through a chipper would be appreciated not to have on the tree because we don't want to tear up our chippers and do those type of things, but we do pick those up and dispose of them. And you can also drop your tree off at our recycling center on Springbrook Court on Saturdays when open, open under regular hours, beginning January fifteenth. So, after the curbside program, if you have a tree up still later in January, you can drop it off at our site at Springbrook Court, January fifteenth during recycling hours that are typically on Saturdays. So, hopefully, everybody has a happy holidays, and like was mentioned, be careful out on the streets, if the guys are out there plowing, give them some space. We've had a couple incidents already this year, and we prefer not to have any more because it's dangerous to the drivers as well as to people in the vehicle, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Item eleven, reports from boards and city officers, eleven A, please.
Item eleven A is a resolution approving the naming of the Steve Gregg Memorial Path. There was a plan commission recommendation for approval, six zero, and a Parks Recreation and Conservation Advisory Commission recommendation for approval.
Mr. Botts, please.
The resolution you have before you is to name a portion of the path that runs along Riverside Park that begins at Public Avenue and will end at Henry Avenue. In the honor of Steve Gregg, the path will be called the Steve Gregg Memorial Path. This has been considered by the Park and Recs Commission and approved, and also, before the Plan Commission and approved, and at this time, we'd like the city council to approve naming that pathway. There'd be intent of putting signage up sometime in the spring, as well as a, basically, a ribbon-cutting or a dedication ceremony for that project.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Johns, second by DeForest, any counselor comments or discussion? Counselor Vanda Bogart?
Yeah, we shouldn't just cut a ribbon, we should have a bike ride for it, when we dedicate, when we dedicate.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, Levy, yeah, we should have a bike ride for it.
Yeah. Can we discuss that, like, a bike rider? Gosh. Gee, some of us got to warm up to, you know, riding a bike.
You can also walk, you can also walk the path, too.
It was a little tired. Counselor Dent?
Mr. Botts, you indicated that there would be additional signage put up to mark the trailway in honor of Mr. Gregg. I wanted to point out in the staff report, it did indicate that that would be paid for by funds that were raised as memorial funds by the families, is that correct?
Yes, I believe so. The family has requested this and committed to funding this project.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other counselor, comments or discussion? I would just like to say, I think this is well-deserved. Many of us knew Steve, and I think he would appreciate it, and I think this is just a well-deserved honor and something that I think, I'm very proud to be a part of, to make sure that it happens, so... And yes, I will, if we decide to ride the bikes, I will ride the bike, okay? That's okay.
We'll pull you if you want.
I'll ride it. I won't be finishing in first place, but I'll be there. All those in favor of approving this, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes seven zero. Item eleven B, please.
Item eleven B is a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund contingency reserve account.
Mr. York, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution provides authorization for us to transfer funds from our general fund contingency account to a couple of the operating department budgets, specifically the Human Resources Department and our Code Enforcement Department. Each year, as part of our budget process, we establish a contingency account to cover unanticipated or unexpected expenditures that occur during the year, and for 2010, we had budgeted two-hundred-sixty-two thousand dollars in general fund for that purpose, and we did encounter some unexpected costs in our HR department for primarily legal fees associated with contract administration, arbitration hearings, grievances, what have you, that required us to use outside legal counsel to assist us. In our Code Enforcement Department, each year, we have a number of properties that we're required to go out and maintain for mowing during the summer and during times like today, snow shoveling during the winter, and we have to pay a contractor to go out and do that work, and there was more this year than we expected. So, we're asking for a total of eighty thousand... So we're asking for a total of $80,000 to be transferred from the contingency account, $50,000 going to the Human Resources Department, and the Code Enforcement Department, $30,000. And if council has any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Haynes, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dentz. Councilor DeForest?
I understand the human resources costs that were unexpected, that were incurred. Do you have a little more detail about what the Code Enforcement?
Primarily for mowing, grass during the summer, for properties that are in violation. The properties may be vacant, for example.
I thought if we mowed those, we were billing those property owners.
Some we do bills and some we do not. The city's also taken back some properties ourself that we buy, say tax sales, what have you, that we have to maintain because we own the property.
Sure. You need to hear.
I mean, essentially, what, we're, we're billing them, but it doesn't flow back into that account because it's an expenditure account.
Okay.
So it gets paid back, though it goes into a revenue account. But when we do the work, it's in an expenditure account, and that expenditure account is over budget.
And in prior years, there were refunds of expense done to the expenditure account.
Okay.
A lot of the money, when we build, if it was a bank or something, a lot of times they'll pay. We do get a lot of this money back. In prior years, we were just putting it back in that expenditure account as a refund. The auditor's correctly pointed out that that should be going in a separate revenue account.
Okay.
So we didn't adjust the budget, and unfortunately, I checked into this when we were making this amendment, we did not adjust the one in 2011 either. So you'll probably be getting some kind of an adjustment somewhere during the year to add some money to that expenditure account as well. It's on the revenue side, it's in the budget, and it's projected for. So again, some of this money we do not get back, a lot of it we do. We've all indicated the grass mowing, sometimes we're cleaning sidewalks, sometimes we're board up orders, or cleanup orders on lawn, and most of the units are vacant, and some of them are in foreclosure, some of them are owned by absentee owners, and they've pretty much abandoned or neglected the property. And so in order to protect our neighborhoods, we step in and under the code, have the authority to do these things. And again, we bill and we collect what we can, but that's the reason for it. And this year, we ran a little short primarily because we were not transferring, we're not putting that revenue back into the expenditure.
And we also have more foreclosures, so there's a lot more properties that are sitting and not being maintained.
More vacancies. Some of those foreclosures, we've got some in the city that we've been maintaining that have been setting for over a year. Some are setting for a year and a half. Bank has not even started the legal process yet. The owners took off when they got the first notice letter from the bank, and the bank has not gotten it into the queue. So we're maintaining some of these things for a year, two years. One of them's going on two years now that we've been maintaining the lawn on this property, and the bank still has not commenced the formal foreclosure proceeding.
Do we backbill the bank?
Oh, yes. Yes. We've been billing. I don't know, we may have gotten some of that money back, too. Some of the banks are pretty good about paying, some ignore us. So it goes on title, eventually it gets sold, and stuff gets cleared up.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other councilor, questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, there is a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes seven zero. 11C, please.
11C is a resolution approving a contract between the City of Beloit and the Rock County Humane Society, Inc.
Chief Jacobs, please.
The resolution that you have before you is a request to approve a new contract with the Rock County Humane Society, new for 2011. So as for background, I should let you know that we've had some very reliable service from the Rock County Humane Society for many years. They offer animal boarding, as required by state law, for stray or dangerous animals. Recently, the Humane Society advised the city that the agency's executive board, which wishes to focus more on sheltering animals due to new state mandates on housing animals and the poor conditions of their facilities. The new contract accurately, or more accurately, reflects the financial support needed by the Humane Society to continue to offer services for an additional year, that is 2011. The previous contract was for the amount of $128,240. The projected cost for 2011 contract is at least $184,250.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval?
I approve of approval.
Motion by Dentz, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Johns. Councilor DeForest?
Yes, I have concerns about the, the increase in cost for services, an increase of $56,000. And had inquired about an itemization of some of those increase in costs, and I understand that, Chief Jacobs, you tried very hard to look for the possibility of an alternative provider. Is that correct? And at this point, we're not able to secure one?
Yes, sir. I'm still in the process of looking for an alternative provider, and if that isn't possible, then we'll have to go internally and see how we can do it.
Okay. And then, as far as I understand, too, there is a cancellation clause, so that when we continue our search, if we do find another service provider, we can cancel this contract for a period of time into the terms of the contract. Is that correct?
Yes, there's a 90-day cancellation clause.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Any other councilor has any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving this resolution, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? 11C passes seven zero. Item 12. Motion by Johns, is there a second?
Second.
You know, one of these days, I would call this so quick, I would say the motion dies for a lack of a second, and we're going to be here all night. Second by DeForest. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.